Recording in progress.
And we'll begin with a roll call, starting with Counselor Bogdan.
Becky Bogdan.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
Catrice McKay.
George Handley.
Thank you. And Counselors Christensen and Hoben are excused this evening. We'll begin with an opening prayer. Today's prayer will be offered by our Parks and Rec Assistant Director, Foster Watanabi, and then we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Bogdan.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this wonderful day. We're grateful for this council, for this wonderful opportunities we have to exercise our freedoms. Bless us today that we might have that guidance and direction. Bless the citizens of this great nation, our country, and also the city. And we're grateful for all those who volunteer, spend time, elected officials and more, that do their best in support of this wonderful nation. Bless us with thy Spirit as we do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan, and thank you, Mr. Watabi, for your help with the prayer. We'll begin with our public comment period. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each item is presented, time to comment will be provided for each item. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation, but limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for open public comment, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within council purview. Persons who wish to speak during this time or to an item that's on the agenda will normally not be afforded a second opportunity during the comment period specific to that item. During public comment, each speaker is generally limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with any comments are invited to approach the podium at this time, or if there's anyone online, Kevin can let us know if we have any who would like to comment via Zoom. Are there any here who would like to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to our first item on the council agenda, which is a resolution approving the Provo Station Area Plan as to form. This will be presented to us by one of our planners, Hannah Salz. Hello, Hannah.
Hello again. This item is for all four plans, just the resolution saying that you approve them as to form, and they will be sent to MAG and UTA, both of whom have given an early thumbs up that the plans as they are now should meet with their approval, no problem. Once those are approved, they will come back to you for a final vote individually for each plan. Good question. No. All right. The plans are all available online in their full, final, laid out forms here at provo.gov/planing. There's a station area plans tab that the public can easily access and find all of the plans as well as their appendices with all of the additional data. Right, for any members of the public who aren't familiar with the plans, I'll do a very brief rundown. Cancel, I know you're well aware. There are seven stations we have to cover as required by state code, which are circled here on the map with overlap that's combined to seven plans around 2230 north, the Joaquin neighborhood just south of BYU, the 700 stop, and then the University Avenue stations, three there, and then the fourth southernmost station on University Avenue is entirely within the larger front runner circle, which has a half mile radius instead of the normal quarter mile radius because it is such a regional connective point with the front.
And Hannah, did you say that each sec, each area will require a separate vote? Is that what you said?
Not tonight, in the final meeting when the final plans are brought to you. For now, you're just giving your thumbs up that you're good to send them to MAG. We can do that together. We are toward the end of the process. We've been through significant stakeholder interviews, heard from over 700 residents, and compiled other plans from our other local and state partners. A slight update on next steps. I have told you that our hearing with MAG would be in September, and then we'd bring the plans back to you end of September, early October. MAG is very busy with other cities, all trying to submit before the deadline at the end of the year. So our city, just because we have four plans trying to come at the same time, might get pushed to a meeting in October, but we'll still be fine to hit the other state deadlines. We've confirmed with them. Just note that if you don't hear from me for a few months, that's completely fine. The individual stations, I will skip through the plans and goals, but they are mostly focusing on building density, especially housing and economic opportunities, services for residents, especially in higher densities close to the station, tapering out to integrate with neighbors on the side, or neighborhoods on the side, and connecting with existing transportation networks to help bring people to the station, but also moving around the station area with the increased number of services. If the council has any questions or would like me to circle back to any of these plans, feel free to. The one other point that I would like to highlight from our meeting is that in the work meeting, there was a unanimous motion asking staff, or nearly unanimous motion, asking staff to pull out a section about the Franklin and Franklin South neighborhoods from the affordable housing section. This is the full spread there. Everywhere highlighted in yellow is a change. You can see it has its own section called out in the body text, but then addressed in its own paragraph. Does this meet the council's expectation, or is there more work that needs to be done on this section?
I think we've done all the work that we can do. I appreciate you adding this in here.
Absolutely. Larger text, sorry. That would have been easier for you. All right. With that, are there any final questions or concerns from the council before you send this along for state review?
You've done a great job, Hannah, taking feedback. It's been how many months now? When we started this, has it been a year?
It's been about two years.
Oh, wow. Okay.
About two and a half years. Yeah. We've got a great team.
Counselor McKay.
Hannah, you've done this perfectly, so thank you for that. I like all the feedback you got. I like the additions you made, and I love some of the changes, you know, especially like the pedestrian walkway over in Joaquin. I am going to vote no, simply because I'm bothered that the state is forcing us to do this and change the zoning. I'd be fine with everything except for that they may against change the zoning, and I think that that may not get the best development that we could get. But just wanted to explain that.
That is a good point, especially to bring up during the public hearing and the public input. All of those rezoned maps do have to be implemented within the next few months. It won't be by the end of the year as we were hoping, just because of the longer timeline for review, but during the winter and next spring.
On each of the floor plan, on each of the four plans, Counselor McKay, or are there any of the plans that do not, that whose zoning fits the?
I don't have a problem with most of the zoning, but I think that them forcing us to do it is inappropriate.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Bogdan.
I would agree with Catrice. I think we would have better opportunities for homeowner occupancy and better development if we had control of the zoning. But once we go ahead and we let go of that zoning, we have no control over what comes in. As long as it meets code, then administration has to let it go through. So I a hundred percent agree with her.
Provo and other cities have raised this concern with MAG as well. You're not alone.
Counselor Whipple.
So we're looking at doing a complete rewrite of our zoning code. So will we need to be considering how we've changed these as we're changing what zones can be?
That is an excellent question and brings me to our consultants for the plan that did incredible work, Somas, Walton Consulting Group, and Lewis Robertson in Burningham. We liked Somas' work on these plans so much and their visions for the area and how easy they were to work with, that we contracted with them for the code rewrite as well. So they were doing these plans and the code drafts at the same time, so that our visions for what these codes would look like on the ground will be reflected in the new zoning codes.
That's wonderful. That means that we aren't going to be having a conflicting situation. Wonderful. Thanks.
Counselor Handley.
I'm just worried that we might not have four votes for passing it tonight, right? We have to have four.
Voting tonight, right?
Or no, we're not voting on it tonight.
You're pa, you're voting on the resolution to send it to MAG and UTA?
Right.
But that's all.
If you can get a four vote majority to pass it along, great. If not, we do have one more buffer meeting I've left before our deadline to submit to MAG, which is August 4th. There is one more council meeting before then if we need to post comments.
So this is only a vote to pass it to MAG, not to?
I understand that. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure we were all clear because we only have five voters tonight, so we're a little bit.
No.
Yeah. I would, I would, I'm fully supportive and eager to see it move forward.
Okay. Any other questions for Hannah? Thank you, Hannah. We're happy to open a public hearing for this item. If there is anyone here from the public who would like to speak, you can approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any council, any additional council discussion? Okay, then I'll call for a vote on the resolution to move these plans to MAG for their review. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
No.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
So that vote passes by, that passes by a vote of four to one. Thank you again, Hannah. Before we move to the next item, in acknowledging that Counselors Hoben and Christensen are excused, I failed to mention that the mayor is also excused. We're glad that she's here when she can be here, but she's unable to be here tonight. We recognize our deputy mayor, Isaac Paxman, who's with us. Next, we have a resolution imposing fire restrictions due to hazardous environmental conditions. This will be presented to us by our fire marshal, Lynn Schofield. Welcome, Lynn.
It's good to be with you. Thanks for having me this evening. I believe you have a copy of both the fire restriction order, because Exhibit A and the proposed resolution. It's just that time of the year again, grass is dry. The temperatures, you didn't notice this afternoon, are up. And so it's time to reduce our risk to our Provo City watershed, as well as the risk of wildfire in our wildland urban interface. So we prepared a fire restriction order effective on June 15th, 2025, and now approached the council for a resolution ratifying or imposing that order as required by law. And I'm happy to answer whatever question you've got.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? Yes, Counselor Whipple.
Um. Is, is there a reason that we can't do this before the effective date? I mean, now we don't have a time machine, but is, like, are you looking at weather patterns or something like that so that you can't give it to us earlier?
That is an excellent question. The answer is, we look at what is the fuel moisture content in our foothills and our watershed, and we also start to look at the weather patterns that are approaching, the temperature, wind events, and things like that. And so I'll, I'll speak specifically to this year, if that's all right with you. We knew that the grass is drying out. It turns brown. It's a pretty good indication. And as we were preparing to go to girls camp, I'm watching the weather so I know how to warmly to dress, and noticed that the week that we were at girls camp was going to be red flag warnings across most of the state of Utah with increased temperatures and high wind events all across the state, which was also present here in Provo. And so at that time, it kind of forced our hand to have to move to impose the fire restrictions. So we prepared the order and worked to get it on the council agenda.
And low rain.
And very low rain.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Bogdan.
Kay, didn't we just have a fire in Pleasant Grove? The Pleasant Grove?
Cedar Hills.
Cedar Hills, Pleasant Grove.
We did have a fire in Cedar Hills. We've had several brush fires in Provo and in Orem, all throughout the valley, so.
A big one in Alpine, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So Cedar Hills, Alpine, that's about the same area. That's where, that's where I grew up. Anyway, um. So for these reasons, that's why I would be very strong to implement this, is because we do need to keep our residents safe. We do need to keep our hillside safe, and so I'm in agreement here. But to Rachel's point, I mean, if we're already seeing these things in northern Utah County, would it have been appropriate to have done this like two weeks ago?
The order was issued on June 15th and became effective on June 15th. So as of June 15th, anybody igniting a fire outside of, let me back up for just a second. So what we are imposing is level one fire restrictions, which means that you may only have a open fire within an improved campground or improved picnic area, meaning you have to have a fire pit that's surrounded by concrete or gravel. It's managed by either our Parks Department or National Forest, National Forest Service for Utah fires, Utah Fire Forest State Office. So we're not totally banning fires. We're just pulling them into already established campgrounds. My tendency, and this has been my tendency as long as I've been the fire marshal, is to try to avoid this as long as is practicable. Realizing that there's always that possibility that we're going to get ahead and get caught up like we did this year. The code does allow us to do an emergency order, which we did on the 15th, but because of legislative action four or five years ago, I then need to bring it to you as a council for the resolution imposing them. So we're covered as of the 15th, but now I come to you to formally impose fire restrictions as a governing body.
I appreciate that because I think it's good for our residents to hear that they don't necessarily have to wait three weeks until we have a meeting for these to go into effect, especially those that live along our mountain site, that the administration can implement one of these things when it's needed, and then the very next council meeting, the council can ratify that and we can go forward.
Correct. So the, the, the fire restrictions were noticed via social media, the regular mainstream press, city websites, parks websites, all on the age of June, and became effective at midnight on 15th.
Thank you.
Per my order.
Any other questions for Mr. Schofield? Thank you, Lynn.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
This item is now open for public comment. If there are any who would like to make a comment related to this issue, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and call for a council vote on this resolution. Counselor. Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. So that resolution passes by a vote of five zero. Thank you again, Lynn. Next, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding nuisance abatement and chronic nuisances. This will be presented to us by Sergeant Bryce Lewis.
Hello.
Welcome.
Longtime listener, first time speaker, so. So this, this code, I made this PowerPoint, so I apologize in advance. I don't know which way it's gonna go. Maybe? It's giving me the battery flash. Okay. This is my bad computer karma, so. You're doing great. Yeah, it's still flashing. Oh, there we go. All right. So that's a lot of words for the purpose, but basically what this ordinance is trying to do is allow the police department to more effectively give us another tool to handle long-term property problems. So for instance, a motel, police can go in and we can arrest all the drug users in a motel all day long, but when the owner refuses to address the issues, we don't have any tools that we can really use for them to affect any kind of change in the community. So that's what this is for, is, is when we identify these properties that we would look at using this, this new ordinance to use as another tool to hopefully help the owner understand the damage that he's doing to the community and give us a little bit more bargaining power. So to be designated a nuisance property, it's five or more calls within 90 days or 10 or more emergency calls within 12 months. And so these would come into our community-oriented policing department. We would be the ones that would review all these cases and get the reports and, and work on designating them as a nuisance property. So. I put in some stats from different hotels that we deal with. Initially, when I got the list of calls for service that we got there, they were so big that they wouldn't even fit on the PowerPoint and you'd be able to read them. And so I took out a bunch of the stuff and I just included what we would call those nuisance-type crimes, which would be anything drug or alcohol-related, acts of violence or threats of violence, disturbances of the peace, prostitution or solicitation, harboring individuals, committing criminal offenses, party houses, and causing or permitting human occupation of any structure infested with insects or rodents. And so when I put those in, those are the numbers that, that were generated. And when you look at it, 287 total in the last two years, meaning that your police department is going to these hotels every other day for the last two years on just those calls, not all the other calls that are being generated because of the conditions of the property and what management's allowing to occur there. So. We got eight aggravated assaults. Like I've seen one case where a guy tried to run over another guy with his van and drove right out onto 300 South, and I don't know how he didn't wreck into some innocent bystander just walking on the sidewalk or driving through, so. Anyway, those are, those are right associated in the area of 300 South and University Avenue for the most part. I put in Marvin's Gardens because I know a lot about this one. When I was in CLP, this was my own project. You can see the numbers, how they ramp up, and then start to work down as we were able to dig into the owner a little bit, and, and we did that through a lot of different resources in the city. But again, it would have been really nice to have this code to enforce on just for the owner. A lot of the times when we talk to owners about the problems, they'll refer us to their management company, or they'll, they'll completely blow us off. And so it'd just be nice to have some accountability for them. But Marvin's was a, a big project that we eventually shut down. uh, project that we eventually shut down. But you can see it took us four years to do it. So these other hotels here, the names have changed, but these are the same hotels that I've been dealing with. And I've worked here twenty years. This has been going for way over twenty years. So um, this could apply to residential properties. Um, I listed a couple of uh, examples of some calls that we were going on. Uh, Sioux Circle. Uh, I served four search warrants on this house and every time we went in, we found guns on top of all these other crimes that you see on the, on the PowerPoint. And honestly, it was just amazing that we didn't have a homicide or something larger there.
Is this a one-year period for this address?
Yeah, this is a one-year. This is just a one-year period. Um, it was, it's a lot of resources to do these kinds of investigations. Um, search warrants, you're tying up an entire patrol shift to assist. And um, the amount of time with handling evidence and doing the reports and going to court and having everybody involved, uh, everybody has to do a, a report on a search warrant, and that means that everybody will be called to testify if it goes to court type of deal. Um, it really, excuse me, it really drains um, a lot of resources. And again, it was an owner occupied uh, home. And they were allowing this criminal activity to occur on the, on her property the entire time. So this is just a year, but in talking with the neighbors, she moved into the house in the early eighties and this had been going on the entire time. And on top of that, she had four special needs adults that were in state's custody that she was housing in the house. Um, so it was, it was a bad deal. So uh, this other house, um, same type of thing, uh, six, we served six search warrants on it in a year. Um, we had to get a lot of other people involved to affect a change and it was owner occupied. And again, uh, it got so bad that the owner refused to live there, but she still allowed everybody in the house to, to be there, causing all these issues. And you know, some of these crimes, like if you go, I don't know, uh, the aggravated assaults, the domestic violence, the disorderly conduct, you're hearing that as a neighbor, like the constant fighting and yelling and and all those types of incidents. And here you're trying to raise a family and, and you can't even let your kids, you know, walk past the house. You tell your kids to walk a different direction because uh, you don't trust what's going on over there. So um, there was a lot of frustrated uh, citizens on this one. So as well as the other one. So it's a, it's, it's a tool that'll assist us um, in dealing with some of these home property owners. Um, it's not something that we would apply in every single case. When we have a problem, you know, there are steps that we like to take to try to resolve those issues and but when we do identify a property owner that refuses to work with us and is just content, uh, you know, going back to these hotels. Like I've seen cases where we've arrested people out of the rooms for these crimes. And the property manager is excited because they get to re-rent the room. So they took money already. And then they're packing their stuff up and putting it in their storage and they're re-renting the room. And they're not taking any ID. They're not, they're not doing any due diligence. It's just whoever shows up with some cash and, and they're, they have a place to stay and they don't care what they uh, what they're causing to the community. So um, it's, it's uh, difficult for the police department because we we go talk to the businesses around it and the people around it, and you can just feel the frustration. You know, that they've been dealing like, like I said, all these hotels, the names have changed for most of them. But they're still, they've been a problem for my twenty years. So um, so we do have the exceptions. Uh, if, if the victim of a domestic violence calls in, obviously we want to protect a victim. So we won't count those. Same-sexual assault or stalking. Um, so there's some common sense to it. It's not a black and white rule. Uh, calls made to report medical emergencies. Um, and then calls made in good faith by tenants and property owners. And this would go back to if the property owner is willing to work with us, then we don't. If they're calling us, calling for us for help, we don't want to penalize them for that. We want, we, that's what we want to encourage is that that relationship. So I had it with Marvin's Gardens with the management company. The problem was we didn't have it with the owner. So the management company was just as frustrated and was willing to work with us. And uh, fact that he was from Oakland and he would tell me all the time that he's never seen this stuff and that happens in Marvin's Gardens actually happened in Oakland. Like he was totally floored most of the time. So um, but that's what we would like to encourage over just finding somebody. But if they refuse, which we get a lot of that, it'd just be nice to have the extra tool. Um, what we would do is we would evaluate the property and make uh, recommendations. We would write a, a, a recommendation report for that owner. And that could be like for a hotel, that might be cameras, that might be security, that might be actually hiring a management company. Um, we've seen where they just hire a tenant to manage the company and the tenant's just involved with the drug trade as everybody else is in there. So um, he's, they, we've had cases where they've uh, yeah, it's just been a mess. So those are the type of steps that we would, those are the type of things we've looked for is um, uh, better lease agreements, background checks, you know, those are some of the things that, that we would, we would want them to try to do. Um, any other measures that we see that would help reduce that crime.
So Sergeant Lewis, if the owner submits a written action plan and implements corrective measures, the fine is waived?
Yeah, yeah. And we'll continue to work with them until uh, hopefully that crime reduces on the property or, or, or those problems go away. So that's, that's the goal is to stop the crime and change the behavior. Yes, ma'am.
Is there concern that we may make it so that some people, you know, if their background checks or things like that, that they'll never be able to find a place to live?
No, because like a hotel or a lawn state hotel, you know, we're not going to make a motel do a background check. And, and most of the people that are struggling that we're seeing as far as that criminal activity go, that's usually where they're at. Um, I don't think it's going to necessarily affect that.
Okay. Yeah.
We're, we're looking for criminals. You know, you know what I mean? So, so uh, those that refuse to follow the law. Um, if, if somebody's struggling, but they're not causing issues, then they're not going to be a target. Like when I was meeting with Marvin's Gardens manager, what I would do is I would print all the cases. And I'd go meet with the, the property manager and we would review all the cases and we would, we would find the, 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 the predator, so to speak. And then they would, they would easily kick them out of the hotel. You know, that hotel had eighty-four rooms. So the vast majority of those rooms, we never even talked about.
Hmm.
If that makes sense. It's just the ones that are engaged in that criminal activity. That's, that's, that's our goal. So it's not to get rid of low-income housing or anything with that. There's a lot of good people that are using it. But when you go talk to those people, they're really frustrated because they have these other groups that are causing ninety percent of the problem and it makes them not want to stay there. And so that's, that's kind of what we're looking for. So the, the snow house, um, Sioux Circle house, those were all people engaged in criminal activity. Like when we went there, it was very rare that not one of them didn't get a charge. They usually had drugs or paraphernalia or a weapon or warrants. Um, so it was very, it was very rare to actually not charge them. Um, so that's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay. I, I just know that we've got a very competitive housing market.
Yep.
And some people through their actions here may be putting themselves out of the running for any good place to live.
Sure.
Um, but that, they're, they're terrible tenants anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's what, like, it's, when we serve a search warrant on a house, there's a state code or a, a rental, right? It's just on a rental side. So anything rental, there's this, there's a state code that we can define as a nuisance property. If there's drugs and drug paraphernalia, and we can actually send a, an eviction letter to a tenant or a landlord. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they, they're excited to get that letter because it gets them out of their lease agreement and they know that there's problems there and they can evict them out um, that way. And they can get people in there that's going to be part of the community. But every now and then, we run into, to a Sioux Circle or a snow house where it, it, they just become drug flop houses is what they are. And so every time we went to both places, it was always, I don't know, around ten people, ten, ten adults in the house, and they were always different people. Because they just show, they know where they can go and use drugs and stay and and not be forced to, you know, clean up and find a job and, or any of those things. It was just, here's, here's my needle. I just use, you can use it too. So um, and, and those houses become so gross. Like, I wish I still had the picture um, of the one snow house. But you can see where the officer stepped in dog feces inside the house and his tracks went outside. So it was one of those places where it was better to wipe your feet after he left the house than before he come in. And it's sad to see those kinds of conditions and then the neighborhood that has to deal with it that surrounds it. So I hope that helps clarify. Um, so the fines would be up to five hundred dollars per day for non-compliance. Uh, revocation of rental permits or licenses and legal action to recover costs of municipal services. So like the cost of the police investigation. So that would be your penalties. So I don't think that's overwhelming or inappropriate, but uh, and then you always have an appeal process. So property owners can appeal it within fifteen days and it'll be by a designated hearing officer. Anyway.
Any other questions for Sergeant Lewis? Thank you, Sergeant Lewis. Thank you for your work and for helping us through this.
Thanks for not beating me up too bad.
This year. Thank you. This item is now open for public comment. If there are any here who would like to make a comment, you can approach the podium. State your name and city of residence.
Hey, my name's Lacey Cheney and I live in Provo. Uh, just a quick question, um, just so I understand the the context. Do you mind me asking, what is the current process? So I see what your uh, proposal is. What is you, the current process? Once you take care of the stated need of the call or whatever, what do you do then to talk to the landlord? Like what does that process look like right currently?
Sergeant Lewis, why don't you come back to the front? Go ahead and ask your questions. And then we'll invite the sergeant back to the podium to answer all your questions.
Okay.
Is that, is that your only question?
That's it.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Sergeant Lewis.
So just to make sure I understand, so when we do an investigation, like a, like a search warrant on a house or, or what?
Right. And then right now, so you're wanting to have a little bit more sway with the owners. Um, so what is?
If you're speaking, please come to the microphone so it can be on the record.
I just wanted to clarify.
Right.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, once you arrive and uh, have taken care of the stated need, um, what does it look like when, like you said, that you don't have very much sway with the landowners to be able to cause, create any lasting change? Um, so what does that process currently look like that prevents that?
Thank you, Lacey.
So, so like I said, ninety-nine percent of the time, we'll serve a search warrant, we'll talk to a landlord and the problem is solved. The, the, the criminal activity stopped. Whether that be an eviction or, or however the landlord chooses to handle it. That one percent, um, we'll go talk to the uh, land, you know, the property owner. And we'll either get no communication back, um, we'll get uh, shuffled around quite a bit. Um, we'll be told that flat out they're not changing anything, that they're running a business, like if it's a hotel and their jobs to, to uh, make a profit and they're just so those, those are easily kind of what we were told in those one percent cases is, is we'll, we'll talk to them. They'll, they'll even tell you, I'll make all these changes and then we'll come back a couple of weeks later and they still haven't made any of the changes. So that's easily how it easily works.
Thank you, Sergeant. Other public comment?
Uh, so it's name and place of residence?
Yes.
Uh, Stockton Carter, uh, Provo. Um, uh, so my question is about, I guess, um, strictly for the residential stuff. Um, if this uh, nuisance thing goes into effect, um, how do, uh, on record, does that basically go on record for the property? Because I guess hmm, worried maybe that some neighborhoods could get basically tarred unfairly because of one residential area that's causing problems, which then, you know, drives the whole neighborhood down. Um, and uh, do I have time for more than just one?
You So, so let me explain public comment. You have an opportunity to, you have two minutes basically, to um, offer your opinion, offer your um, input related to this issue, something that you think, something that you feel. And then we could call the sergeant back up to the podium to respond to those issues. So go ahead and address the council, state your, your feelings, your thoughts, any concerns that you have related to the issue.
Um, uh, on the issue of uh, drug possession, um, I guess I'm just not familiar with the laws of the state. I guess isn't the fact that drugs are at the property, you know, almost a smoking gun in and of itself, or again, do I just not know the laws regarding what you're, what you're allowed to do to a property or like whether it's detaining or charging homeowners or whatever it is for allowing drugs on their property? Especially if they're, you know, really bad drugs. Um, I think that's probably all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there any additional public comment? Sergeant Lewis, would you like to respond to the last, to Mr. Carter?
So, um, like I said, we can, we can arrest uh, people for crimes like drugs. Um, but yeah, uh, if the property owner is allowing criminal element to just fill that void again, which is what we see in these cases, then then we're not um, solving the problem.
It's basically the problem that you can't really prove that the homeowner has possession of drugs.
Sorry, Mr. Carter. We're, we're, we're just going to let Sergeant Lewis respond. Yeah, thank you.
Um, it's, it's not the way the position code's written is, it's not the uh, just because they own the property doesn't mean we can charge them with possession. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant.
No problem.
Is there any additional public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for discussion. Counselor Bogdan.
Sergeant Lewis, would you be more than happy to respond to anyone's questions out in the hallway if they have further comments or questions for you?
Sure.
Okay, so Sergeant Lewis has said that he would, so if you just want to approach him and he, he's in the back. And then you can just go out in the hallway so it doesn't disrupt our microphones and just ask him any further questions you have on this item or any other items that he's willing to address.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan. Yes, Counselor McKay.
Officer, thank you so much for doing this. I know this makes some of my citizens really happy. And I've heard from them. Um, I heard from some of those news, the Granville nuisance property, the air, the, the people around there when that was going on. So um, I think this is a great change and I'm glad that you have the tools that you need.
Others? If not, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
So that ordinance, proposed ordinance passes by a vote of five zero. So that ordinance, proposed ordinance passes by a vote of five zero. Thank you again, Sergeant Lewis. And again, he's available for any other questions, but in the hallway.
Sergeant Lewis, I'm sorry I said officer.
Next, we have a resolution to submit an opinion question to the residents of Provo City in the November fourth, twenty twenty five election regarding authorization to impose a local option sales tax as described in Utah Code, section fifty nine, twelve, fourteen oh two. This will be presented by our direct, our public, our parks and rec director Doug Robbins and by our the project manager, John Bunderson.
Thank you and good evening, members of the municipal council. I'm joined here with John Bunderson, our projects manager, who's instrumental in completing many of the projects that are funded through the Recreation Arts and Parks uh grant revenue that we receive. It's been ten years since it was originally initiated, uh, the RAP tax, and uh the state law requires either a renewal uh vote or discontinuing of the uh RAP tax every ten years. So we're here to uh present the basics of what RAP is, some of the results that we've received over the past ten years and a plan going forward. Uh, state statute uh allows Utah cities and counties to levy a one tenth of one percent ta- sales use tax for the purpose of enhancing recreation and cultural arts in the community. Uh, one way to calculate that is it's one penny for every ten dollars spent. And it's not just the residents of Provo that pay this tax. It's all the visitors that uh come through the city or spend time here in the city as well. So we are able to collect that revenue as well. Again, it's the ten year period. Right now, we're accumulating about two million dollars of of RAP funding each year uh through this tax. And just to be clear, this is not a an exit, it is not a new tax. It's a renewal of an existing tax. So this is not a tax increase we're discussing today. The last public information or survey data we've received was back in our two thousand and one master planning effort, where fifty three percent uh of the uh randomized residents of Provo that were surveyed said that they would vote in favor of this. Uh, nineteen percent said they might vote in favor, and twenty not sure. So uh, it's pretty good support. The original two thousand and fifteen uh vote tally was fifty five point eight percent. So we're well well within that margin from these stats of being uh successful in a in a vote uh to renew this this tax. This also comes with an emphatic and hearty recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board in their March meeting to uh recommend to the council that they place this on the ballot. Um, one of the reasons why Provo uh does so well is because of its uh it's careful fiscal policy. We've long ago developed a pay-as-you-go approach uh to avoid long-term debt and the commitments associated with bonding. So what we do is take this RAP revenue and the development impact fee revenue and use that as a fund match to go after uh state and federal and local uh grant opportunities. This chart shows some of the recent grants that we've received, you know, John and and our uh Parks uh team has been instrumental in in getting these funds uh for the city. So we really use this, these dollars to seed money. Happy to report also that just a few days ago, we received a a grand award of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Fort Utah All Wills Park. It's in the capital improvement plan for the next fiscal year. So we're right on line with that. Just want to emphasize how important these RAP funds are to the department. It's really become the the funding source to take care of the things that we currently have so they don't uh degrade. Like to now highlight a few projects. I'll be joined with John that have been funded with through uh RAP RAP funding. Again, every project has a funding plan, and most projects have a combination of funding sources that make them successful, depending on the grant opportunities and uh requirements of the grant funding organization. So I'll turn it over to John. Uh, well, starting with Unlimited Play Center at North Park, this was funded through a CDBG grant, which is federal monies passed down through the city, and then also RAP that took it over the top and got it completed for the community. I'm go- I'm going to cover the highlights of the highlights. So, um, again, CDBG funds were used for the development of the new Spring Creek Park in the Spring Creek neighborhood, and uh impact fees were also used for this as well as RAP tax funds and a small component to bring this project across the finish line as well. The Provo residents have consistently identified the trails network and open space and the Provo River as being uh key recreational elements of the community, and two million in RAP tax funds has helped to deliver over eleven and a half million dollars of improvements uh along the Provo River Trail. This uh graphic here represents the three point nine uh miles of trail that have been widened and under crossings improved, and some instances bridges replaced. Uh, this slide demonstrates some of these improvements that the residents are able to enjoy now with uh better intersections, um better grades, ADA improvements along the trail network um in these sections that were made possible in great part by RAP tax. Uh, the Lakewood Playground was uh impacted by RAP tax and Utah County Recreation uh Municipal Grant Funds. The Rotary Park Court uh expansion with four tennis courts, eight pickleball courts, uh re- replaced restrooms and uh upgraded playground and swing set were all made possible by RAP tax funds and entirely funded by RAP tax funds. The show at Fort Utah was a project that brings a major league experience to our youth, um, Little League and girls softball leagues that play at this field that uh give them that uh next level experience uh for their ballfield uh play, and this has really transformed our rec league play for these youth. The Riverview Park had a playground replaced, um, tennis courts with new post-tension concrete surface uh courts, as well as four pickleball courts added and a half mile of asphalt pathways replaced, all due to RAP tax funds. Rock Canyon Park, um, playgrounds replaced, consolidated in a new three-node uh playground network, as well as the restrooms upgraded with year-round capacities, trails repaved, and parking lot in the bowl uh resurfaced as well. Um, all paid by RAP tax funds. The College Connector Trail and Independence Trails were improved, as well as uh the Mazer Park and Carterville Park pathways were uh resurfaced as part of the RAP tax funding. The new Quail Orchard Park was partially funded by RAP tax funds, and this is a new seven point six acre park with uh great amenities, playgrounds, pickleball courts that uh are open to that neighborhood and the community at home. The West Park Renewal Project was a park that hadn't seen much attention since the nineteen forties, when it was deeded over to Provo City, and uh has now been given a new sport court that allows dropping basketball play and pickleball striped courts if you want to bring your own net, a new pavilion, swings, and restroom, and new high-efficiency irrigation system for the fields. Rock and Rock Canyon Trailhead improvements following the uh master plan that was established with Rock Canyon, Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance, who brought some funding to the table in addition to our county and state counterparts who helped largely fund this project. The RAP tax funding enabled the completion of what is there today, uh with improved off-street parking, new year-round restrooms, and uh new pavilion and interpretive plaza, and can't leave out the new trail surfacing for the plant, the looped trail network that's been added there. Covey Center for the Arts has received uh some improvements that keep it modernized and competitive as a uh world-class uh a ma- uh facility in Provo City area. Uh, some of the improvements were carpeting, HVAC system, lighting, sound improvements. And then finally, want to highlight the Epic Sports Park, which was partially funded by RAP tax funds, largely by grants, and some of the impact fees funded the completion of fifteen new uh sports fields, uh two large playground areas, two large high-capacity restroom areas, as well as the support maintenance areas that uh allow for world-class turf maintenance. So in addition to these impressive park developments and improvements, um, each year, local arts groups and are invited to apply for the Community Arts Grants Program, of which uh the Provo Arts Council makes decisions and awards these grants each year. And uh the amount that uh we tip that we annually have for this grant program is twenty five thousand, supposed to increase a little bit through the next year. Um. These are the five categories that we would proceed uh to to utilize additional funding if if you choose to move forward with with the RAP going forward. First is exist- existing facility upgrades. That's really to take care of the the existing facilities that we have. Our new playgrounds to replace our old ones, restrooms also, so they don't become outdated and out of uh out of safety compliance, new pickleball courts, uh dog park opportunities and new restrooms. Again, uh, the arts with the improvements and enhancements to the Covey Center for the Arts, maybe performing arts series, uh our grants program, and maybe enhancing that and some support of the library art galleries. Our trails and pathways, uh including bridge replacements that are in need, uh connecting the Bonneville Shoreline Trail in northeast, pathway lighting and exercise nodes, even some mountain, uh some that was proposed, some mountain biking nodes on the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, so it is you're traveling along that trail, you can get off, do a technical, well, I'm gonna get back on the trail, those kinds of things. And of course, this isn't, is not an all-inclusive list. Uh, long-term planning, which would include land acquisition, uh when opportunities arise, open space preservation, utilizing, better utilizing the Provo River for as a recreational resource, another wetland and natural space preservation efforts. And the last is a is a typo. It should read minor capital projects. And those are minor uh projects, including pithy lane restroom roofing, ADA uh improvements, playground shades, shade structures, and other capital items that are just a little bit over the maintenance budget. So all of these uh go into uh our capital improvement plan each year, and the these are our guiding documents that we use to to uh to utilize all these RAP funds. All RAP funds are located in our capital improvement plan. These are some of, a list of some of the projects that could be funded uh going forward. And we utilize the general plan, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, survey data, our uh hillsides and canyons plans, rivers and lakeshore plan, neighborhood plans and others to try to collect all the priorities of the city, of course, the council priorities, to make sure that they're in the capital improvement plan each year, and as we morph that and improve it, uh, and then it's adopted by council, we have a good framework to to build upon. So our path forward, uh, tonight, we're seeking a decision on a resolution. Um, then uh we need to notify the Utah County Commission of the intent, the council, to 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 proceed forward. They would then notify uh us back within a period of time, their intent uh not to proceed with such a similar endeavor. If that, if we get clearance uh from that, then we can go to the state. And then uh by resolution, ask uh, you know, notify them, uh, the state by August twenty first, uh, to put this on the November election ballot. Uh, we've also found out just a couple of hours ago, uh, if we, if this passes, we can get that resolution on the County Commission Agenda uh for their next week's meeting. So we're well within the timeframe. Any questions?
I can't remember if we've talked about this, Doug, if you have any uh preconception on whether or not the county does intend to consider their own RAP-type tax uh this year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're intending to. We've had no notice that they have. And uh considering several other communities also within Utah County have RAP taxes.
Already.
I think they probably, I I know they decided on the last go-around, they weren't going to do this going forward.
Okay. Other questions for Doug or John? Counselor Bogdan?
Bringing up the Fort Utah, that reminded me, can we get a softball update, just kind of how it went this year, and just not necessarily here in this meeting, but could you just have like somebody just email us and tell us if it was a complete disaster? Because you guys had the girls at Fort Utah Park this year, right?
We did. We got some input from you and also George at that meeting. That was really wonderful. From what I've heard, it was very successful. They had a great time. We plan to do more of it. That's again why these were, these parking lot improvements are so needed. We're over at capacity in that parking lot. We really do need to expand the capacity there because it's it's so
Right.
so overutilized, so.
So the girls were satisfied with it. And did we have anything over at Harmon, or was it all at Fort Utah?
I think there was some program at Harmon, but a lot of it moved over to uh to Fort Utah, but I'll get that report too.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, I first wanted to apologize for leaving earlier today during the work meeting before you were done with your presentation. Um, so I was was trying to to look at the numbers, and you say that we get about two million dollars a year, or we had been through this tax, um, and that about thirteen percent of that was going towards the arts and the Covey. But if we're getting two million dollars a year and we're only doing about twenty five K for those community art things, that's only like one point two five percent. It's it's a very, very small percentage that was going to public-facing art things. Um, I understand that you're creating a kind of committee of interested citizens to help advocate for that or for for the RAP tax in the future. Um, would such a committee include people who are are interested in having like a bigger percentage for the arts?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yes, Gary Winterton. He was a past uh council member.
He's a delight. I like him.
I believe the mayor invited him to kind of serve in in that role, so we'll certainly pass that on, and we'd have no problem with
Yeah, because we've gotten wonderful park facilities because we've we've put this into it, and I don't want to diminish how well you've used that money and leveraged it. But I've gotten a lot of feedback from community members who are really mourning that so little of this has has gone to the arts, and most of what has gone to the arts has been to the Covey, which isn't the same kind of kind of community art, public facing, and and that active engagement that many people would like to see. So I'm really happy to hear that you're, we're looking at in the future increasing that percentage for art-specific things.
Sure, and we'll pass that on too.
Thank you so much.
Bet. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Doug and John.
Yeah.
This item is now open for public comment. If there are any here who would like to speak to the issue, you can approach the podium at this time. If not, we'll close the public comment period and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments or discussion, council members? Counselor Bogdan?
What I like about this is that this isn't a vote necessarily that we have. This is a vote that we're putting out to the public. This is something that we're saying, is this valuable to you? Is your park space valuable to you? Are your trail systems valuable to you? Or is the Covey Center valuable to you? Is arts as a program valuable to you? And the residents, the voting residents, those that take the opportunity to vote this November, will get to decide whether this is where they want this money to go. This is the opportunity for the people to decide where they want this money to go. Do they want it to go to parks, or do they not want to pay it? Do they not have the opportunity to pay it? And that's what I like about it, and that's why I will vote yes, to put this on the ballot, because it's it's the opportunity for the people to actually have some say in their city of where this money will go.
Thank you. Other comments or input? If not, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
And Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Thank you. So that resolution passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Doug and John. Our next item is an ordinance amending the General Plan Appendix B to include new moderate-income housing strategies. This will be presented by our community grant administrator, Melissa McNally. This will be presented by our community grant administrator, Melissa McNally.
Good evening. Thank you. So the ordinance amendment that we're proposing is to implement more moderate income housing strategies in our, in our plan. The language, some of the language has been changed on strategies that are already in place just to update what we're working on as a city. And there are some language that was taken out because there, we're no longer working on those things. And then we'll skip to the new strategies that, that we're asking to be added in this amendment. One, Strategy M, and these are all found in the Utah State Code, Chapter ten. So demonstrate creation of or participation in community land trust. Yeah, excuse me. Strategy N, implement a mortgage assistance program for employees of the municipality. Strategy P, demonstrate utilization of a moderate income housing set aside from a community reinvestment agency. And Strategy X, create a housing and transit reinvestment zone. And all of these were chosen. These are all things that the city is, is working on or looking at working on in the very near future. So it's, it's easy enough to implement. And it's nice to get credit from the state so that we are meeting our, our state mandate for moderate income housing strategies. And do you have any questions for me? I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Melissa? Counselor Bogdan?
I just have a weird question. Why P and X? Why not like one, two, three or four? P alphabetical order, what, what does that even mean?
That, the, the alphabet, the alphabetical references
Right, and it jumps.
Right, are from the Utah State Code. So that's, it's just if you go to that, that code, you can see that, that Strategy X is that. So the code reference is over on the far right. And that's where you can find it.
So the state code has like A to Z and we're just implementing P, X.
Yes, that's exactly right.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes, so I had a question about one of the ones that we're crossing out, which was to amend land use regulations to allow for single room occupancy developments. Did we not effectively do that by authorizing the dormitory on Center Street in that one little like two block area?
Yes, yes, we did. It was my understanding when I was updating the moderate income housing last year that we weren't doing. It's basically, it was basically to implement micro units in the downtown area. And it was my understanding that that wasn't moving forward. But yes, you're right. That's what we did with that, with those units, with the Taylor project is what you're referencing, right?
Cause I'd like us to get credit for that.
Yes, that would be, that would be great. I mean, I can, I can update that on our, on this year's moderate income housing that's due August first. So it's still there. I can still
It's a very small thing that we did, but we did do a thing. There were news stories about it, so.
And that's a great point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
We'll now open this item for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments or discussion, council members? Counselor Bogdan?
Do, Brian? Do we need to make a motion that includes, we accept this with Rachel's recommendation of adding the dormitory into the housing thing by August, whatever?
Of adding a description of the fact that we already did it?
Yeah.
Your, your question? I don't know that we need to. If you want that in there, that I think it would be helpful.
But it's not necessarily needed? For this passing?
I'm so sorry. Yeah, no, it's just for reporting purposes because it's already in our implementation table that the state has. We can get credit for that. This is a, this is a change that takes effect as soon as you vote. And that is already done. So, yeah.
So it's nothing that we have to like include?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
And Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
That ordinance then passes on a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Melissa. Our final agenda item this evening is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at twelve hundred North Independence Avenue from manufacturing park zone to low density residential zone. This is in the Grandview South neighborhood and will be presented to us by our planning supervisor, Aaron Hardmore.
Thank you. All right. So you see the property highlighted here. What you've got in front of you is just the current zoning and just the RL imagery and the general plan. So you could see that this zone change request is in an area that calls for residential development. What's being requested is a zone that would enable the property owner to, to carry the same building pattern further north up Independence Avenue. And by that, I mean, you could see the townhomes along the Independence Avenue currently. The proposal would be to change that triangle to the LDR zone, enable them to do six more of those townhomes. You could see the, the concept plan that was approved by planning commission here. We had anticipated the project plan pending approval of the rezone to look very much like this. This went through a pretty thorough review, more detailed than some concept plans we see. So it went through a review with Engineering Public Works and it was found that this concept could, could definitely work if the LDR is approved. These would be six new for sale units. Like I said, the applicant would have to come back and do a project plan as well as a subdivision application if the request was approved this evening. But that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. Is there a representative here of Georgetown Development? Would you like to offer any additional information or comment?
Certainly Brandon Mills, Georgetown Development. So let's see if I can. My presentation is somewhat redundant to what Aaron has presented, but the location is there by the freeway at the end of, north end of Independence Avenue. This kind of shows the zoning overlay. It would be six units. Just real quick, there are twenty four parking spaces. We've since added two more parking spaces that would be for guest parking. And also bike, like somewhere to secure bikes. And let's see, there are private driveways, two car garages for each unit. Three bedroom, two and a half bath, about sixteen hundred fifty square feet. We did a similar project to this here in Provo. And this is it over, it was called Rose Court was the name. And that's right from Google Maps as far as street view. That's what it looks like when I pulled it on June tenth. So that's all I have, open for questions.
Brandon, any feel for anticipated price point for these units?
Price point is going to be somewhere around four sixty to, we're trying to keep it under five hundred. End units will be closer to the five hundred thousand dollar range. But some of the, the costs that we're anticipating, there will be some fill that needs to be brought in, some structural fill because of some dumping that's happened. But we're trying to keep it reasonable. But it's looking like middle units will be about four sixty end units if we can keep them close to four ninety, that would be ideal.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Counselor McKay?
I love it that you're gonna have them for sale. So thank you for that.
Certainly.
Is there gonna be any, cause I assume you'll have an HOA with this?
It will be a standalone HOA. One of the questions that had come up was if this would be part of the townhomes to the south, it's not, it, it would be a standalone function on its, on its own.
Are you having anything in the HOA where they have to be owner occupied?
Typically we have language in there that, that does restrict it to somewhat, but it, it doesn't restrict it to owner occupied. It would be something that someone could rent, but we do typically prohibit nightly rentals.
Well, yeah, the city prohibits that too.
Right.
Yeah. What about, is there anything to protect it from being investor owned that it could be?
No, there's not anything formal that we're trying to restrict it, but we do want to, to make them available for sale. It's not an investment property that we're holding. Typically when that happens, people try to squeeze cash out of the deal. And so these would be wholly owned units.
That's great. I do know some developers have been doing where they can do a within the HOA have at least has to be owner occupied for the first year, which just keeps investors from buying, you know, three of the units or, you know, just all the initial purchasers to be investors where they just become institutional rental properties.
Yeah. We can consider that, but it, it's a unique thing, right? Because housing is, there's such a demand for it, right? Even rentals. And so you know, that's something I'm happy to consider.
Other questions for Brandon?
A couple, actually. So to me.
Yes, thank you.
So to me, the, the homeowner occupancy in perpetuity, that would be something that I would need in order to secure that because we do need a lot of homeowner occupancy and there is a lot of issues with institutional rental properties. The other question I have, if you could go back a slide?
Sure.
Back one slide, another one? There. So you've got natural landscape to the north. Do you guys own that as well? Cause it looked like it was a triangle piece you were trying to rezon.
Yeah, that is part of the, the land that we own. It does narrow to the north. Part of what our plan is, and we've talked with David Day, is to deed that portion of the land to the city, which helps facilitate extending Independence Avenue north. Now, there's actually, let me go back. This slide on the right shows that extending to seventeen thirty north. That's the, the long-term plan. I don't know time horizon as far as what the city is looking at on that, but, but that would help facilitate this.
Right. So that would just be deeded to the city and that. So I guess that answers my next question of why you wouldn't finish the road all the way to the top of your triangle.
Right.
It just stops. And then in lieu of that, the city would take over the land.
Yeah.
And it's now our responsibility to finish however far it goes to seventeen thirty north, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that.
Other questions? Counselor Whipple?
I'm just sad you couldn't squeeze another little block of, of houses in there.
Yeah. As developers, they tend to squeeze as much as possible. If you're familiar with Georgetown Development, that's not our ultimate goal. We, we don't try to squeeze every inch out of a project. We do like green space. We like plants and, and things that make it feel very comfortable and, and look nice. So.
I'm, I'm glad that you're trying to make it nice for the people who'll be there. It, it is still too bad that you couldn't just go like another little block of two, just, just to the north of it.
Yeah. There is a significant elevation change from where the road is. So it would be to the left, to the west. There is quite a bit of grade.
I thought it was probably something like that that was stopping you. This, this looks like a good project and a nice continuation of the type of housing that we've already got over there. And yeah, more, more homes for people to live in is good for our city.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brandon.
Certainly.
We'll now open this item for public comment. If there are any here who would like to speak, anyone from the neighborhood or the community that would like to speak to this issue, you can approach the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any discussion or comments, council members? If not, we're ready for a vote. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
That ordinance passes by a vote of four one. Thank you, Brandon. If there's no objection, we'll now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you.